Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting for Monday, October 28th. All rise, please, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We will begin our meeting this evening with public audiences. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Yes.
... At the last Board of Select meeting, we were asked how many selectmen would be willing to give Simsbury residents a choice in their form of government. Now, one person raised their hands. They were not interested in pursuing professional government with the town manager. Simsbury residents have paid for consultants that recommended a town manager for Simsbury. A past charter revision commission had a minority report written by the Democrats suggesting a town manager. First-elect Mary Glassman promised having a town manager elected. Many residents voted for her with that promise in mind, and now we have Glassman running away from the town manager issue. How can we believe anything that all these candidates proposed in their extensive flyers when they are not committed to their promises made in their packages? Simsbury needs professional management, and the residents deserve a choice. If this board is afraid to take a position on this important issue, how can they tackle future positions on policy? We, the people, deserve candidates that take strong positions on challenging issues. It is time that candidates take positions on various issues that affect Simsbury residents, not just broad-brush platitudes. I ask again, what is the position of the members of this board on the issue of town manager? If they can't respond to the electorate, why vote for them? There was an incident at Simsbury High School during Spirit Week, and here's the dispatch tape, "during Spirit Week," causing the pep rally to be canceled. According to the police dispatch tape, a person under the direction of Neil Sullivan, principal of Simsbury High School, on October 18th asked for police cruisers to go to the high school because, and I quote, "Senior class is going crazy. They are running through the halls, they are outside of the football field, they are out of control, the entire senior class," end quote. The police report states that they were dispatched at 11:21 a.m. to assist with a large number of unruly students that had left the school. The police reported that students on the football field were calm and walking back to the main entrance of the high school. Since everything appeared calm, the police were dismissed. Neil Sullivan told police that, quote, "Several senior class members were loud in the cafeteria and then did not listen to faculty instructions to turn down some music and leave the cafeteria," end quote. The students that had returned to school were instructed to return to the cafeteria. School security notified Sullivan that there was a loud chanting coming from that location. Staff and police entered the cafeteria where at least a few hundred students were being loud and obnoxious. The police then called for more officers. There was discussion about canceling the pep rally. At that time, Sullivan asked the police to remain, to maintain order, as he feared a possible reaction to his canceling the pep rally. Sullivan reviewed the events with the police prior to their arrival. He stated that during the first lunch, seniors were allowed to play music in the cafeteria as part of getting ready for the pep rally. At the conclusion of that lunch, seniors were told by Mr. Patrino and Mr. Perre to turn the music off and head to their respective classes. The students refused to follow directions and would not turn off the music. Mr. Perre turned the music off and told the senior class to leave the cafeteria. The seniors then walked out of the cafeteria yelling and screaming together. Sullivan said that students went into the second-floor hallway and continued to walk around the school, banging lockers, grabbing dog at the door handles, singing and yelling. They did this on the third floor as well, and then walked onto the football field. According to the report, tension was building between the junior and senior class this past week, and it blew up. There was flat football game that occurred between females from the junior and senior class also contributed to the tension. According to the report, the school administration advised the police that they would handle discipline for this incident. It appears in this report that the administration was aware of tensions with the junior and senior class and took no action. There were many questions to be answered. Why did the administration ignore the issue of tension before it blew up in their faces? Why were the students not summoned to Sullivan's office to discuss the tension between the juniors and seniors and resolve these ongoing issues? Why did the students ignore the directions from the administration? Why were the decorations for the pep rally taken down by the administration? It was reported that expletives were used against the students by the administration. Were these allegations investigated? What lessons will learn from this incident? What policy changes will be made? Leadership starts with the administration, and the buck stops with the principal, Neil Sullivan. It is the responsibility of the principal to provide a safe learning environment for all students, and by kicking known issues under the rug, hoping they will go away, shows lack of leadership. Since this incident shows lack of leadership, should Neil Sullivan remain as principal of Simsbury High School? It is alleged that the Big Y is no longer interested in dealing with the road through the skating center and will discuss an alternative traffic pattern. Has this traffic problem been resolved? To date, there are no shovels in the ground, and we are approaching winter weather. What is the latest update on Big Y? Since attorney Elliot Gersten owned two acres of property on the Wagner Land, he is an abutted to the Big Y development. According to Pullman &amp; Comley Law Firm, where Andy Glassman is an attorney, a news release states that Gersten's practice focuses on complex litigation involving business, individuals, and entrepreneurs from all aspects of business. With this background, how can anyone state that Gersten has remained silent on this issue, since his property will become more valuable with the development? On November 5th, Simsbury residents will be asked to vote for candidates for all the elected boards and commissions.
You could summarize quickly in five minutes.
I suggest we take your vote seriously and not limit the vote to a popularity contest. Ask questions of your representatives and demand answers. This is not a popularity contest. We need candidates who will show leadership and take firm positions on public policy issues. Everyone should make an educated vote on their choice of candidate. Vote November 5th. Thank you for listening. And all my comments will be on Simsbury.com and Simsbury Patch.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. You know, it's interesting you closed with Elliot Gersten, Charlie Gersten's properties and the dog and pony show we had in Terrifil regarding keeping that post office up there after the land and the building was condemned. And if you walked in there, you would die, you would get killed, but they kept on going, kept it alive in Washington to the very, very end. And speaking of that, we have a situation. I don't know who owns the property to this post office, and I haven't, I've been negligent in the fact I haven't gone to check the property to see who owns the property. But the way that grounds in the post office, inside, outside, in the driveway, in that way, is kept, it's a disgrace to the United States government. And I've been seriously thinking of writing the Postmaster General, but I think that's a job for the town to do. But nevertheless, it's atrocious. And now we're coming into winter, we're going to have big holes in there? And I call up every now and then and ask Howard Beach to have it filled in, but they shouldn't be keeping a United States post office like that. Maybe it's time this one should be condemned too. Couple things, well, three things primarily. The first thing is, I noticed we're going to have a review of the approval of the Performing Arts Center Financial Resort Report, results for 2013 session, and discussion of the status of the 2014 session. And I noticed that a few of the officials from the performing arts are here. However, the leader, Mr. Hensley, for some reason or other, he's absent, and he's a fellow that knows all the facts. So I don't know how you're going to review something without making inquiries of Mr. Hensley. Mr. Ryan is here, who's a 401 chairman, and I'm glad that's happening, because now we'll have the federal government to come in every once in a while and make sure that you people are auditing the performing arts properly, because now the federal government's involved. And the second thing is approval and negotiating of the two-year contract with the Hartford Symphony Orchestra for the Talkeet Mountain Musical Festival. And this involves the performing arts also. If you recall, we had Mr. Crawley came down, and he addressed you people regarding he was going to be arrested, or they were going to arrest him for listening to the music down there, and he asked you to look into it. And now we have a situation that you're going to review the contract. And my question to each and every one of the member of the board who are running for reelection, are you going to insist that this agreement that's in the agreement for the lease for the property and the music, and the contract, that turns the property over to them as long as there's a concert on the property? And if you go into that contract, which I haven't, but I understand from knowledgeable people that in that contract, that when that performing arts symphony performs, they control all that land around. They control the performing arts, the meadows, the land outside, the sidewalk, the whole bit. That shouldn't be in the contract. It's our property, not performing arts property. It's the people of Simsbury. They own the property. Now, having closed that, one thing that's troubling me, and I've noticed it in Patch, and you people, this whole board, the first selectwoman, and each and every one of you selectmen and women, supported the vote for the nominations of the various committees. Now, I noticed that my tax dollar is being used by Mr. Mark Demming, who's the chairman of the Economic Development Commission, and he writes a letter, and he's taking Walter Mondale's, old Walter Mondale, who I knew. Where's the beef? When he ran for vice president, that's what he always came out with, was where's the beef? And this, and he went through, and he used his position as the chairman of the Economic Development Commission to attack Ms. Hossi, who I'm certain she must have voted for him to become a member of the Economic Commission, because they voted on each and every member. And she must have voted for him, and this whole board must have voted for him, because if three members did not vote for him, he would have never went on to the Economic Development Commission. And why is he using my tax dollars to attack Ms. Hossi? And I'm not saying it because it's Ms. Hossi. If it was you, Mary, I would say it. If it was Lisa, whoever it was, I would tell him. I'd come right out and tell him. It's wrong. You're using my tax dollars for a political platform for Mr. Demming. And Mr. Demming didn't have the courage, in his statement, to acknowledge or write a disclaimer that he's married to Linda Schofield, who happens to be running on the Board of Finance for a chairman, for the board. In fact, she's running just opposite of Mr. Henau. And my question is, why are my tax dollars being used so he can get a political platform for his wife to attack members of this board? And I'll close with that. I think it's a terrible example to set, and to use tax dollars to do it. If he wants to do it, fine, then let him resign his position on the Economic Commission as chairman and as a board member, and then he can go all over the town doing whatever he wants.
Thank you.
But he's not going to do it with my tax dollar.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes.
Sarah Nielsen, Executive Director of Simsbury Main Street. I'm actually here with apologies from Amel Dollquest, who's the chairman of the Design Committee. In your packets, I believe that you have a two-page letter from Main Street and the Design Committee from Amel Dollquest. I'm not going to review the whole thing, but it's basically talking about the senior center study again, which is a very important issue. And I just want to remind the Board of Selectmen that Main Street and the Design Committee fully support the two-step process for expanding our senior center, which is starting with the phased development at Eno Memorial Hall and to satisfy the immediate needs, and then two, a broad-based independent study to verify the findings of the initial needs assessment study. And that, you know, he lays out the reasons why we believe that Eno Memorial Hall is the most appropriate place, the fiscal reasons, from a community planning standpoint, from the environment, social, and design. So, again, you know, what he's really saying, what the Design Committee and Main Street is saying, is that this is too important a step to be rushed into, that it really needs that two-phased approach to make sure that we're fulfilling needs, not only today's needs of the seniors, but needs that will fit them in the next 15 to 20 years, as we evolve, as technology evolves, as our gathering space evolves, that we really need a good plan and something that's not going to hurt the town fiscally as we move towards this zero-based growth.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, Sarah, come on back. And thank you all for your comments, and I'll ask Sarah to address us. The Simsbury Main Street partnership actually is here tonight with a presentation. I know there was a discussion at the Economic Development Commission about getting some of the good works of the town and some of the awards the town has received out to prospective businesses and prospective residents, and I want to thank Sarah and Main Street for coordinating with the Economic Development Commission. This was even before the marketing study was completed, which actually suggested some of the things that are happening here. And I want to particularly thank Chris Barnett, who is a Realtor, who worked with Sarah and some of the other Realtors, to take a look at how we could best market the town and involve the schools and some of the marketing materials. So, Sarah, thank you for being here, and I thank members of the Main Street Board who are here with you this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief, so that everybody gets out in time for the World Series. We're going to be very brief. First, I'm going to pass these out. I apologize. I'm going to ask you to hand them back in afterwards, just because I have limited copies right now, because we haven't been on printing. I just want to point out, this actually started about 10 years ago, maybe eight years ago. Main Street got the town designated as a Preserve America Community, which is a White House designation, a federal designation. And from that, we applied for a grant through the National Park Service, $100,000. We matched it with state grants and local monies as well. And what we did is we came out with a branding, a comprehensive branding campaign for Simsbury, a heritage tourism campaign that focuses on the unique qualities and aspects that Simsbury has to offer and the marketing position that we have. So this is actually about eight years in the making. So we started out with things such as the Heritage Charm and Adventure, the Economic Development folder, which hoteliers use, I know that town government uses. In fact, I know that Mary's office sent it out when we were trying to talk to the companies that were purchasing pieces of the Hartford. So, you know, I thank the town, because your continued commitment to using the branding enhances what we've done. You'll notice it on the annual report, you'll notice it in the Simsbury, Connecticut logo that was created. And then this year, what we've really decided to focus on, after a lot of discussions with our business owners, with our residents, is we wanted to focus on the next steps for economic development. So what we decided to do is, we decided to work collaboratively with the superintendent of schools and the school system to create what you see before you, which is a brochure on the excellence of Simsbury Public Schools. And we did this out of different comments and different questions from local Realtors. I don't know if many of you know, but Realtors cannot talk about the school system. You know, they could, it used to be considered steering, they could lose their license, and so they can't answer anything except for the most general questions about the school systems. And so we stepped in and said, well, here's a need. So, that was the Heritage Charm and Adventure. So we wanted to do something that would help sprout economic development. And this really comes at a nice time, because as you guys mentioned, about a week and a half ago during the special meeting, we had Peter Fairweather come in and talk about the marketing study. And we worked closely with him, but we've also been working on stuff leading up to all of his conclusions that we've already put in place. So I think we're in a great place right now. We did something, and I shouldn't say we, I should thank my designer, he's actually a Simsbury resident, Jeff Dornenberg, and he's somebody that, through a nationally competitive, competitive RFP, or Request for Proposals, we chose him out of about 25 nationally competitive companies, and we've had the most wonderful working relationship with him ever since. So one of the things we focused on was what Peter talked about a week and a half ago, which is the quality of life factors. When companies are looking to expand or to, especially looking for a new location, the number-one issue, as Peter mentioned, is the quality of life for their employees. And Simsbury, having such, you know, talking about all the marketing demographics he talked about the last week and a half, we are poised to be that location. He also, you know, we talked about how with this, the marketing position really focuses on Simsbury's excellence. And then what we did is we took all this information from the school system. You know, they provide a fantastic annual report, they provide a lot of brochures, but quite frankly, it's very lengthy. It's very lengthy, and to somebody that doesn't do that all the time, it's a little bit dry. And so what we wanted to do is take the best of it, what makes Simsbury competitive. So we turned to our local Realtors. And here's where I'd like to thank the four major Realtor companies. We had Chris Barnett and Liz Banko. Liz, because she also was from Prudential, but she's also tourism. So they sat on this committee on behalf of what is now Berkshire Hathaway, I believe. We had Charlie Kaler from RE/MAX Communities. I had Susan Arsenal, who's a past board member from RAVIS. And I had Katie French, who's a current board member from Coldwell Banker. So we have all the participants from all of the major Realtor communities. And after we got all the schools' information, with working with Lisa and Martha Hogan and Katie Wild and the superintendent of schools, Matt Curtis, we said to them, what separates Simsbury? Why do people choose to purchase in Simsbury? Because we really want to make sure we have that competitive edge. And they went over the reasons. There's, it needs to be a value above taxes, okay? If you're looking at just Simsbury versus another town in the community, it's not simply taxes. You know, that's the first people, first thing people think of, is our taxes are a little bit more. It's not just test scores. Again, if you're looking at things like the standardized test scores, it doesn't tell a complete picture of why Simsbury is positioned above, you know, other area towns. This piece is also good for homeowners. It's, you know, it's great to talk about economic development, and that's the number-one reason that we did this, but it also helps homeowners, for example, that are trying to sell their house, because this becomes another tool that their Realtor can use to position themselves, to say Simsbury is the choice for you, another tool for town government. It shows, you know, what we really tried to do after listening to the Realtors, and it was so interesting to listen to them talk about why someone would choose Simsbury, why they'd choose West Hartford, where, you know, where people are moving. And actually, we talked about potentially having them come back and do a short presentation on where the housing market is, so that you guys have informed information on where's the lag, where are people buying, are we getting relocations and things of that nature, but that's kind of for later on. But the one thing they talked about, which we hope that this brochure conveyed, is that regardless of what your child may be, you know, everybody that has a couple kids, one may be an athlete, the other may be very academic, and the other may be artistic, that regardless of where your child is or what his or her passions are, that your kid can shine in Simsbury. And that's really what I believe came out of this. And it stresses the academic excellence, which is the number-one reason why people choose Simsbury. But again, it rounds this out with all of the other things. It's kind of that one-stop shop. And even though Realtors can't talk about the school system, they can provide the literature. So we're working collaboratively with them to make sure that this gets done. Main Street has paid for the design, and again, having a very strong relationship, and also, if you notice, these are very similar companion pieces, you know, has really cut down on the cost. We are looking for printing now, because we're going to disseminate this, as well as all of the, we're going to be redoing all of the information. For example, again, this is the Economic Development flyer. We're going to use a lot of the things that came out of Peter Fairweather's presentation as we update this, but we're going to be updating it with Dornenberg. And so, you know, I just think it was a great time, you know, and for those that don't have the brochure in front of you, that's the cover. It really talks about how we're, you know, among the best in Connecticut. We have photos of real students, and we have the permission to use their photos. It talks about, you know, the different breakdowns between the grades. It talks about the academic excellence. I know the red part's a little hard to see, but it focuses on things like the engineering, the languages, the student learning centers, and the 21st Century Classroom. It talks about the athletics, the culinary arts, and the music and other arts. And then it has things like the 2010 Distinctive Destination. We're still the only town in Connecticut to have ever received that designation from the National Trust. Again, we're the Preserve America Community. We have tons of accolades, CNN money, I mean, it really goes on and on. So that's our update. I will be hopefully next presenting to the Board of Ed as well, but I really wanted to thank everybody collaboratively who worked on this, because it was a really interesting piece, and it wasn't just the schools. This really took a lot of moving parts to make it so successful.
Thank you, Sarah.
And we'll have a better print copy. This is just the mockups. They're going to be thicker and obviously glossier and much nicer.
That's great, and this will be really helpful as we give them out to prospective businesses, prospective visitors. And the timing couldn't be better, because Connecticut Magazine just rated Simsbury number one. So the timing will be great in schools, yes. So thank you for all your hard work, and look forward to seeing more.
And then again, one final comment. Again, I just want to thank the board, and I have Tom Horne here, who's one of my board members. And, you know, as we go through and talk about what the focuses are, and really the focus, I think, on being economic development and for residents who want to see their taxes lowered, you know, that, I think, has been a big focus. We're positioned, through what Peter talked about and some of the other things, we're already working on a lot of that stuff. We're revamping, you know, we'd love the board's interest, you know, and your feedback. We're already moving forward with a lot of that stuff through Main Street to continually promote the town as a whole.
Thank you very much. Question?
Yeah, just one comment. First of all, Sarah, thank you for your efforts on this. It was a pleasure working with you on it. But one of the things I just want to point out, that this is very unique. Often, the schools will put out a piece and talk about how great they are and what they have to offer, but to gain the perspective of a Realtor who's selling the town, and they can say, well, you know, it's great, the school has this perspective, but when I deal with clients, this is what they ask me, and this is what I need on the flyer. So it's an interesting approach. It's unique. I don't think I've seen it done in any other community.
Yeah, and actually, you know, I will thank the superintendent of schools, Matt Curtis, as well, because it's something, when we started this process, I don't think that he was anticipating that that's what it would be. We kind of explained it, and when he started to see the pieces, he had that initial, well, you know, wait a second, you know, we should put in this, and we should put in that. We said, you know, and we kind of came around and said, listen, you know, we want everybody's opinion and everybody's choices, but also knowing that we have this Realtor meeting. And the minute he heard that and he understood that we had a Realtor meeting, and they also weighed the pros and cons, and that they helped shape this, he was excited, you know, and it was a little bit different than, I think, even what he was thinking. And it's something that the schools wouldn't produce.
Exactly.
But I think it makes a nice compliment. They're doing what they're doing well, they're doing their job, and they provide a lot of fodder for what we can produce on our end. And it just, I think it works collaboratively.
And it shows the relationship between education and economic development, and home values.
Oh, yes. Sometimes people forget that.
Correct.
Whether you have kids in the school system or not, there is an economic development result of having school system, a public school system like we have.
And that economic result in turn benefits the schools, because that helps fund the schools. So they're interrelated, and it's wonderful to see this partnership. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to the announcement of Veterans Day. The annual Veterans Day ceremony will be held on November 11th at 10:45 a.m. at Eno Memorial Hall, and I want to thank our veterans for sponsoring that as well. I know Bruce Elliott's here, and thank you for being here. Yes, why don't you say a few words?
I'll just take a minute on this. Thank you, Mary. I'm Bruce Elliott. I'm currently serving as the post commander of the Tom Lonas Hall American Legion Post here in Simsbury, and along with my friend John Romano, who serves as the post commander for the VFW post here in town, we're co-chairing the planning committee for our annual celebration, our ceremony on November 11th to recognize Veterans Day. And really, my primary purpose tonight is to remind everyone who is aware that we do that service, that again, it's this year, it's two weeks from today. And in addition to alert people, and the viewers, SCTV viewers, that we have this ceremony, it's at 10:45, it's on Monday, November 11th. It takes about 30 minutes, roughly, maybe a little more. And in addition, I wanted to extend a personal invitation to the members of the Board of Selectmen. Mary's already agreed to be on the dais with us, so we have her commitment. But in addition... But in addition, we will have, again, this year at our ceremony, Simsbury resident Nancy Felinger will be playing her bagpipes, which is really a nice touch. And in addition, we're honored to have Simsbury resident Robert Kalischman with us to offer his comments and some thoughts on Veterans Day. And he's known, as many of you recognize, for his citizen activism here in town, but also for his military service in the Korean War with the Marine Corps. So we're looking forward to having, again, a very nice, you know, and respectful remembrance. For those who don't know it, just a brief moment on the history of Veterans Day. It started as Armistice Day and recognized the, so the end of the First World War. It was the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. The World War I ended, and it was called Armistice Day until 1954, when, under President Eisenhower, Congress re-designated it as Veterans Day. So it's a day to remember all who have served and continue to serve in our armed forces, and they're now in 100 countries around the world. I'd also offer, you know, a little personal note to this, that it's, you know, we all have busy schedules, and we'd really like to see everybody make an effort to get there this year. We forget, we're, a lot of our attention, and rightly so, is on the World War II and the Korean guys, and women. They're at an advanced stage. And our Post, the American Legion Post, we've lost eight members since the last, the last time we had the ceremony. So if you think you might wait till next year, there are some that won't be there, potentially, who will be sitting in the audience in two weeks, who will not be there next time. So I encourage everybody to consider joining us and remembering the people who have served and those who continue to serve. So once again, two weeks from today, over at the Eden Memorial Hall at 10:45. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Thanks for being here and reminding us how important it is to honor our veterans. Thank you for your service. And also, thanks for holding the open house, the Veterans Open House, to convey some information to our veterans, and we appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate your support of the veterans' issues, Mary, and the other members of the Board of Selectmen. And our friend John Hampton has always been a fan of the veterans in town.
We'll look forward to working with you.
Again, we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. We'll move on to a quick report. As was mentioned earlier, I'm pleased to report that Simsbury came in first in Connecticut Magazine's recent rating of Connecticut towns with median home prices of $200,000 to $25,000 to $299,000. In the past, Connecticut Magazine grouped towns based on population. And this year, the town, Magazine compared towns with similar median home sale prices, because the change was, in their words, "When people consider where they want to live, they're far more likely to consider what they can afford than they are to think about how many people live in a particular town." There were 41 towns in our category, and Simsbury came in first. So we're thrilled that our town was compared on the quality of our schools, our crime rate, our local economy, leisure, cultural activities, and civic engagement, based on voter turnout in 2012. Connecticut Magazine stated, "Simsbury, with the best public schools and second-highest voter turnout in the group, landed in the top spot, with Glastonbury and Granby coming in in the top three." So congratulations to Simsbury. It'll go a long way in helping market our town, and this certainly confirms what we already know, in that Simsbury's not just a great place to live, but it's a great value as well. So congratulations. As we head into Halloween, I'm pleased to report that there are no hurricanes, tornadoes, or tsunamis on the weather forecast, and we're going to be celebrating with a Halloween party this Wednesday. The town of Simsbury, based on our past experience, was preemptive in holding a free-townwide Halloween celebration Wednesday, October 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the library. Admission is free, there's no age limit, and the activities include magic display, storytelling, trick-or-treating, and more. So everyone's welcome to join the costume parade and celebrate the holiday and the safety of our library. The event is free and open to the public, and anyone wearing a costume, and don't come as a politician, anyone, will receive a few, a coupon for a free kids' ice cream from Jay Fosters.
No dangling magnets.
Thank you to Parks and Recreation staff, the Simsbury Library staff, and social service for making this event possible. And finally, as was mentioned earlier, Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. Polls will be open for municipal elections from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The registrars asked us to remind the public that there are four polling locations, Henry James, Latimer Lane, Tooton Hills, and Tarawful. If you do not know where to vote, or you're not sure, you may contact the Office of the Registrars at 860-658-3267, or 658-3269. You can also visit the town website at www.simsbury-ct.gov and contact the voter registration page. There are two new pieces of information the registrars asked us to share with you. The new voter deadline, new voters who wish to cast a ballot at the polls must sign up in person at the Office of the Register voters by tomorrow, Tuesday, October 29th, at 8:00 p.m. The registrar's office in Town Hall will remain open until 8 o'clock tomorrow night to accommodate new voters. This year is a new Election Day registration program. Individuals who choose to participate in Connecticut's Election Day Registration Program should appear in person at Simsbury Town Hall during voting hours on November 5th. You have to bring valid identification to register, and Election Day registration must be completed by 8:00 p.m. in order to cast a ballot. The Election Day registration process takes about 30 minutes, so the registrars ask that you prepare to arrive in time to register and to vote. Once again, if you have any questions on voting, please contact the Office of the Registrars. And as Connecticut Magazine noticed, civic engagement is a true test of a community, so let's make sure that we participate. Thank you. We'll now move on to the action items for the Board of Selectmen tonight. We have a motion, we need a motion to approve tax refunds. The total is $4,967.65. These have been reviewed and are recommended by the tax collector. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a request from Jerry Tonner and the Parks and Recreation Department to set up a special revenue fund for a new activity. This program is called, let me make sure I got it, Simsbury Triathlon 2014. The actual event will be called the Tri-Simsbury Run Bike Paddle River to Ridge Triathlon. The event is scheduled for May 18th and will be completely paid for with the revenue generated for the activity. So this is a new event. I want to thank Linda Schofield, who came up with the idea and approached town staff, and Ed Cox, who's here tonight. And thank you for your interest, and I'm glad that you can run bike and paddle, so that's great. And in order to do this, they will need a special revenue fund in order to deposit the funds from the donations and sponsors, and use those funds to pay for the event. So I don't know, Ed, you're welcome to add any comments if you'd like. Come on up.
I haven't done this before.
Oh, well, it's easy. Go ahead.
So my name's Ed Cox, and I'm here representing a group of individuals and organizations that are working to hold a triathlon here in Simsbury next May 18th. As you know, a recent consultant report recommended that Simsbury focus some economic development efforts on Simsbury's unique and wonderful outdoor recreational assets. With that report in mind, we are designing a race that will include them. First, the Metacoma Trail in Penwood Forest, the bike path through town, and kayaking on the river. All three parallel each other, and they're in close proximity, so we won't shut the whole town down.
That's good to hear.
The race will be a variation on a traditional triathlon, in that it will entail running on trails, not paved paths, and kayaking on the river rather than swimming. And then we'll include the bike part. Our goals are to highlight Simsbury's recreational assets and extensive marketing materials, so that the event will attract to Simsbury anyone who reads about it, not just those who decide to actually enter the race. Number two, to bring folks to Simsbury on Race Day and create incentives for them to frequent Simsbury local businesses while they are here as a racer or as a spectator. And then third, the best part, to create a fun event for racers who will hopefully want to come back to use the course elements independently in the future. The event, as Mary said, Tri-Simsbury Run Bike Paddle, with the tagline, "River to Ridge Triathlon." The budget, $10,000, estimated, roughly. We hope to attract 200 racers at $50 each for registration, yielding enough to cover the expenses. However, we will also solicit corporate sponsors in order to provide us with needed upfront working capital, and also to cover any shortfall from registration. This part is, we need to entity, to be the financial home for this event. We understand that town leadership is interested in making this a town-sponsored event, and we are happy to be such. But we need a bank account, so to speak, so that sponsors and racers know who to make the check out to, and so we can pay the bills. We understand that the town can set up a special revenue fund, as is done for the Simsbury Celebrates event. So I'm here to ask for Jerry Tonner to do so. We hope to make this annual event for that, so that any surplus after the race is completed, hopeful, would remain in the fund for use during future races or for future course improvements. Any questions?
Thank you, Ed. That's really exciting, and thanks for sharing your idea. This is similar to Simsbury Celebrates, where we have really dedicated volunteers who create a fun event and work with our town staff and really get publicity for the town and have some fun. I think you did a great job explaining it, and we appreciate all your hard work. Questions for Ed? Yes?
So similar to Simsbury Celebrates, it's not officially a town event, but we're going to help some.
No, it is officially a town event. They are going through Parks and Rec.
Okay. So with that, what are the financial controls? Who's signing the bank account? Who's withdrawing funds?
So Jerry can explain. It's like a Simsbury Celebrates, but it's going to be sponsored by the town.
It'll be through, you know, it'll be an account set up with the finance department, and in some, some of the, you know, some of the recitals, we would, you know, have various accounts set up within that fund, and, you know, everything would go through the normal channels that all our other, you know, our typical, our normal budget does. So, yeah, I wouldn't see it being, you know, being much different. Certainly, if it's approved, you know, I'll be meeting with Linda and Ed and, you know, trying to get a timeframe on, you know, what they see as some of the, you know, the key deadlines and what they're looking for on the schedule of, you know, going out for sponsors and things like that, so. And we'll, you know, they've accomplished a lot in a short period of time, and, you know, we'll continue to, you know, work along with them and make it happen. But it looks like it's going to be a great event.
Absolutely. No, it sounds like a great event. My next question turns to liability. So we're putting people on the river. We're putting people in boats on the river, and it's a town event.
We're meeting, all of this is pending review by council and review by KIRMA. We've already contacted KIRMA, we have a meeting set up. We do have swimming, we have a lot of activities in town that we do with kids in water, so.
I understand.
And all of that is reviewed by KIRMA, and if they're not comfortable with it, though, it won't go forward.
Okay.
So this is not to circumvent the pending, the required town process. This is to set up the revenue fund should the town go forward.
I understand.
Yes.
Spend a lot of time on the river, it's not as tranquil as it always seems, but, okay.
I'll take your word for it. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the special revenue fund?
I move we approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Next item is to set a public hearing date for the blight ordinance changes. If you recall, we had some revisions, potential revisions to the blight ordinance. We did set that to a public hearing. We had mixed comments on the public hearing. In light of those comments, we've met with town council, and we've come up with, I think, what is a better recommendation, and that is to make a change in the town code ordinances, which allow the town to enter and clean up blighted properties if the property owner refuses to cooperate with the town. We recently had a great experience with 22 Lost Brook Road. We took a look at the property. If you see the before and the after pictures, what we did is, we met with the nearby property owners and the neighbors at 22 Lost Brook, who were concerned about the condition of the property. We started a legal process to have the blight addressed. In the meantime, we were able to get an agreement from the property owner to go on the property, to clean the property, and to lien the property for the cost of cleaning and addressing the issues. This was a win-win case for the town, because we were able to address a blighted property in a very quick timeframe without having to go to court. And in the process of looking at this experience, which was so much more successful than some of the other blighted problems, which take a long time to go through the court system, we contacted other towns and found that a lot of towns have adopted this code, which allows you to go onto property and lien it if the property owner refuses to cooperate. We have 163 homes in foreclosure in the town of Simsbury. We have more than a half dozen of active cases, where we either can't find the owner, or the property's been abandoned, or we can't find the bank, or the taxes haven't been paid. In cases where the taxes haven't been paid, we can begin foreclosure proceedings, so there actually is a process. But in cases where the taxes have been paid, but the property has been abandoned, the town faces a really difficult situation about cleaning property. And as you can see, if you lived next to one of these homes, there would be a lot of concern, not only for the condition of the property, but also for the potential public health and safety issues that could come up with a home that's neglected and abandoned. So town attorney has drafted a revision to the blight ordinance, which would allow the town to go on to the property should a property owner fail to comply with the town's remediation orders. We think this is a limited change in the ordinance, in light of the comments that we received previously. And we also think it's a good way for the town to address some of the foreclosure and blighted properties that are causing concern, not only for the town, but particularly for the neighbors who live next door to these properties, who don't have any other recourse other than wait for the town to enforce our blight conditions. So with that introduction, any questions or comments? What we would need tonight is not a vote on the action itself, but just to set a public hearing, so that the public could have notice that we intend to make the change to the blight ordinance. And once we set that public hearing, we will be able to take comments and make a decision on where, what to take next. Okay. Questions? Okay.
When do we want to do public hearing?
I think, at our next Board of Select meeting would be enough time to publicly notice it.
10:11?
Providing information to the Board of Maymont.
Okay.
10 days, right?
Yeah. Would you prefer a different date?
It might make better sense to do the, what's our next meeting is the 2nd. I mentioned the 2nd, we're about to do the 9th in December. So let's, we're writing, we give it 13th. Just have to move it quicker.
November 13th.
Yeah.
So we'll set the public hearing for the next Board of Select meeting of November 13th. Can I have a motion to do that?
Second?
Lisa? And second, Nancy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
I'm not opposed. November 13th is a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Yeah. Awesome. All right. Thank you.
The next item is to set a public hearing date on the naming rights policy, on the request of the zoning commission to rename all way as Jim Gallagher Way. I want to thank the Board for their support for the naming of a town facility policy. It's been very helpful in outlining what steps people need to take in order to request a name change or a naming of a particular item. And then also, it gives the Board a blueprint as to how to proceed, to make sure that we consider the request properly. We need to, in light of our policy, set a public hearing, again, for our next Board of Select meeting, and then we would need to confirm by Mr. Gallagher that he has no objection to having the name, the road named in his honor. And once we confirm that, we will be ready to act. So any questions? Can I have a motion to set a public hearing on the naming rights policy?
I'll move that for Mr. Gallagher, and with our thanks, he's been a longtime volunteer in the town.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One second.
Questions? All, you have a question?
It's going to be for the 13th as well?
The 13th as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the Simsberry grant application for regional performance grants. We are thrilled that there's some opportunities here for the town of Simsberry to participate. There are four grant opportunities through the Capitol Region Council of Governments. The first is a regional nutmeg network connection and the second is a regional data discovery recovery center. The third is a regional computer forensics lab and the fourth is a human resources online clearinghouse and template. The regional nutmeg network connection is something that the town had planned to pursue on our own. We were trying to get the fiber connections in order to be able to improve the online services offered to our residents. This is a regional attempt to do that and comes with a significant amount of state grant money. And I want to thank the Moore Commission and I was honored to serve with Representative Hampton to come up with these recommendations. So, that will go a long way in helping us reduce the cost for our connections and helping us get some of that funding more quickly because the state is going to be favoring regional applications rather than town-by-town applications. So, this would have been an application that the town of Simsberry would have put in individually, but because this is a regional application, by our participation in the region, we actually have priority treatment. So, we get a chance of getting, a better chance of getting funding. The next is a data disaster recovery center. Most towns, Simsberry included, we don't have a disaster recovery backup plan. Our goal is that should a disaster occur, there would be a backup plan in place that is, enables the town to start up the next day in another location. These programs are very expensive for towns to purchase and to come up with on a town-by-town basis. But again, this will, is a lot cheaper and a lot more quick if you participate with other towns. So, that is the recommendation for that as well. The regional computer forensic laboratory is something that the chief, our chief is very interested in participating in. He has taken a look at the benefit that it would provide to Simsberry and recommended that we participate in that application as well. And finally, the human resource online clearinghouse and templates is another opportunity for towns to buy software on a regional basis rather than on a town-by-town basis. Would save the town money and would provide a better online and a better streamlining of our human resource functions. If you remember, the board authorized Simsberry to be one of the pilots on the building permit, online building permit process, and that's been very well received. And I think there are more than 19 towns that participate and Simsberry was one of the first to participate in that as well. So, these applications must have a resolution authorizing the town to participate. So, we would need to read the resolution into the record if the town so chooses to participate. Any questions?
Okay. We had CROG come to the technology committee to do a presentation on the nutmeg network and one of the reasons why that's so exciting and the potential there is to create thin clouds. So, then we move away from hard technology to the applications are in the cloud and it can be a cloud you create to preserve security. But the potential there is tremendous in terms of savings and repairs and maintenance. And then the other advantage is it does permit towns to share different programs, so you don't just have to buy it for yourself when you're in the nutmeg network. It does permit sharing of services and therefore sharing of costs.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lisa. Also, the region sees the nutmeg network as a way to allow towns to share finance packages, to share Board of Ed and finance backup. So, it really, if it's approved and if the towns receive the funding, it could transform how the towns implement their technology. So, it's a really exciting opportunity. Other questions?
Just a comment, having participated in the Simsberry Citizens Police Academy, one of the programs they talked really about quite extensively was the forensic laboratory and with the technology nowadays, how important that is. And yet, resources are so limited for towns to be able to do that on an individual basis that it'll be a huge help to have that for the department.
Absolutely.
Just add something quickly. The CROG is also just engaged in the back office study where it's looked at a wide range of technologies that we use or could use. And getting the nutmeg network up and running for us would be, would essentially open a new world in terms of potential cost savings or things like the finance programs that Mary and Lisa are talking about, considering the forensic piece. This is really where the future lies and this is our best shot at getting grant money to do it.
That's one of the things the federal government is studying, best practices of towns, and they did recommend that towns start looking into thin cloud technology in terms of cost savings. So, it's consistent with some of the best practice analysis out there. And obviously, we'll be looking at security and making sure that all our information is secure.
Absolutely. Other questions?
I'm pondering the irony of the federal government telling us how to run town.
Well, they didn't, they actually did research. They didn't, they just, but there's some interesting papers out there.
Absolutely. Sorry.
Do you really want to go there tonight?
Yeah, I don't go there.
You could probably write that on a memo.
They didn't do that in the latest, but...
Would anyone like to read the resolution of endorsement?
Couldn't resist.
Is there the short one?
As my pen, I'll read them. I'll read the resolution endorsement.
Yeah, just a, yes.
Just the short one?
Thank you. The long one. I'm sorry.
Is it the long one?
It is.
It's the big one?
Keep going.
All right.
Resolution, yeah, I might need some. Resolution authorizing the town of Simsberry to participate in the OPM Regional Performance Incentive Program, whereas Section 4-124S as amended by Section 251 and 253 of Public Act 13-247 passed by the Connecticut Journal Assembly provides statewide incentive grants to regional planning organizations for projects that involve shared services and, whereas the Capitol Region Council of Governments is acting as a conveyor and facilitator of services, sharing projects around the CROG region and, whereas on October 23rd, 2013, the Policy Board of CROG passed a resolution authorizing development and submittal of an application package to the State Office of Policy and Management for funding under the, and, start again, for funding under the Regional Performance Incentive Grant Program on behalf of the council's member municipalities and municipalities of other regions which are participating in council initiatives and, whereas, I'm reading the right one, right?
Well, the only...
You guys are messing with me now.
No, I'm just, I just would, I apologize. I apologize. You're doing great. You're doing great.
Am I reading them both just to be sure?
Well, I just want you to specify that Simsberry is endorsing the regional grants. I think the resolution of endorsement gives, says we already voted, so that's what my concern is.
That was talking about the CROG.
Right.
The board has voted, but the, it's going to say towards the end that it's, it's okay.
Yeah, okay. Keep going. Keep going. You're doing great.
You're on the fourth one.
Am I on the fourth? Whereas, excellent. Whereas, the chief elected officials and municipal staff of the Capitol Region have developed a list of service-sharing project proposals that will be included in this application package to the benefit of individual municipalities and the region as a whole and, whereas the town of Simsberry has expressed interest in taking part in the project proposals, proposal slash proposals entitled, one, the regional nutmeg network connections, two, the regional data slash disaster recovery center, three, the regional computer forensics laboratory, and four, the human resources online clearinghouse and templates. Now, therefore be it resolved that the town of Simsberry Board of Selectmen does hereby endorse the above referenced Regional Performance Incentive Program project proposal, it's a lot of P's, and authorizes the first selectman to sign all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions to allow for the town's participation in this program.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I didn't hear that. Could you read it?
Thank, I just want to thank everybody because this is really going to transform how towns do business and I think it's really exciting and I hope that we get the grant funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to review and approve the performing arts financial results for the 2013 season and discussion of the status of the 2014 season. I want to thank the performing arts board for their hard work over the last season and look forward to a successful 2014 season. I noticed that the financial report that the town received tonight has a couple variations from the last report that the town reviewed. So, I don't know if anyone from the performing arts board would like to address the changes and we'll go from there.
Kirk Jansen.
Kirk.
Chairman Hensley unfortunately couldn't be here. He had a longstanding out-of-state conference and this meeting was scheduled, you know, after that, so, but I assure you, he spent countless hours working with the town finance department with Tom Cook and Jerry and Tom Vincent. And I think the results, the numbers you have show that the overall season, we made $5,000 and we, reviewing our charge, the first, the first charge was to break even plus. Second was to work with the Hartford Symphony to have a successful September Fest and to schedule two non-losing or additional concerts for the town that were, would not put us on the hole. And we learned a lot this season. We had one concert that was canceled, learning process, and we now, I think, are on, there's a better understanding between the promoter, the town police department, and the board has worked very hard to, I think we can sharpen our goals for 2014. And of course, we're very excited about the transition, which we hope will be sooner rather than later, into the 501(c)(3) and the new board. And with that, we'll be a, I think, an improved financial system where we, and the performing arts will probably be on a calendar basis, be able to work with QuickBooks books and we'll be able to give you instant answers in a system that'll, that'll help us manage the business a lot better, so.
Thanks, Kirk.
Any questions about the numbers you got or...
Questions? I just have a...
Jerry's here and Dave Ryan, who's, you know, Chair of the 501(c)(3) and Ed and Kathy.
Yeah, thank you and thanks to everyone for their hard work. Look forward to getting a status from the nonprofit as to how their proposal to take over. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to make sure that the contract that expired on October 15th was completed and that the performing arts board got everything they needed in terms of the contract completion. So, if you could just verify that for us, that would be great.
Yeah, as far, the board is very satisfied and I think that we've been through it and reviewed and I think...
Great.
Mr. Vincent isn't in town now, but we're happy with the results.
Just, there were two items in that contract. One was the marketing report. I know that, I don't have a copy of the marketing report that was in the contract, so if the town could get a copy of the marketing report...
Okay.
So, that would be in our files because that was a provision of the contract, that would be helpful.
I can talk with Mr. Vincent today about that. He does have, he's in Florida right now. All those, his materials, the marketing materials sent out are up here. He told me that when he's back, he'll be glad to put that together.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it is, since it was a provision of the contract, the town does have a copy. And then there was also a question about the fundraising that was in the contract. I was just wondering if there was any success in the fundraising piece as part of the contract, if you were able to raise a fund for fundraising this year.
I didn't understand.
There was a fundraising component, that there would be an attempt to do some fundraising this past year and I was just wondering if there was any, any success.
The only fundraising I'm aware of is the sponsorship...
Okay.
...which happened. There was no, because, and the reason for that is, I think our eyes have always been focused on the 501(c)(3) and that's really the principal reason that's being put together
Okay.
...to do that.
Yeah, and that's, that's private, so we don't, we don't need any of that information. So, yeah, absolutely.
Sponsorships, I mean, it's on the top line of revenue. They did raise 48,000 plus.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was saying it's...
Kept the season in the blind.
Yep. So, that's great. Yeah, that's all I had. I just, I know in terms of moving forward to the 2014 season, we look forward to the proposal to have the nonprofit take over. I did just want to report that if the 501(c)(3) takes over the operations, there's no need for the town to go out to bid. I think this board did request that if the town were to hire the manager for next season, we would go out to bid. So, if that's, just wanted to make sure that the board knew of that timetable. So, if the 501(c)(3) plans to take over before next season, then there's no need for the town to be involved. But if the town does retain control, then we would have to go out to bid. I think that was...
That's our understanding. We have a meeting on November 5th, 7:30 here to...
Perfect.
Try and get the, we've got six weeks of hustle, so.
Great. All right. Well, that's great. So, we'll look forward to hearing your proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Great. Thank you, Kirk. Our next item is the approval of the two-year contract with the Symphony for the Talkeet Mountain Music Festival. This will bring the Symphony to a 20-year anniversary.
We could vote accept.
We could vote accept, sure.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is to approve the two-year contract with the Hartford Symphony. Again, as I said, this will bring the Symphony's relationship with the town to 20 years. It's hard to believe that a tent in a cornfield would have blossomed into a 20-year relationship with the Symphony and we're thrilled that the town's efforts 20 years ago has resulted in this wonderful relationship. I think the contract is pretty self-explanatory. There's a two-year contract, I think, which is a good amount of time to transition. I know the, the contract before you requires the town of Simsberry to enter into the agreement. That's because the nonprofit's not ready yet to accept the terms. So, we, we can assign it, should we, it is in there that we can assign it should the nonprofit be ready to lease a facility directly from the town. So, thanks to everyone's efforts to make sure that that happened. There are some changes, as you can see, there'll be six, change from six concerts to five. The number of performances will be changed by mutual agreement of the parties. There is a license fee reduction, but an increase in the fees so that, I think because of the weather, there was certainly a request on the Symphony's part to loosen some of the obligation upfront, but then to share the benefit with the town, with the success. There is a clause for penalty for late payment. There's financial verification. There's also concession and a clause for concessions for beer and wine sales, parking, fireworks with, which the town will sponsor but not pay for, venue sponsors and assignments. Any questions? Lisa.
Thank you, Tom and the tack board for negotiating this and thanks to the Hartford Symphony. We're pleased. One of the other additions I think that is new is that the, the town will pay the HSO $1,500 for each concert by an outside promoter and that's because the Symphony needs equipment and things there and it's, and if somebody else is going to be using it, it makes sense to share in that cost. So, that's just a fairness clause, I think.
And just to follow up on that, Lisa, I think that's a good point, but I'm assuming the town will pass that fee on to the promoter so that there wouldn't be a loss of $1,500 of the revenue.
The idea is certainly to cover that cost when we're in the oven, but certainly, as members of the performing arts center board will verify, that there was some discontent from our friends at the Hartford Symphony. We've worked very well together on a lot of things, but I think they felt some frustration in seeing the additional concerts using equipment that they'd leased rather than have a sort of a concert-by-concert negotiation over what the real cost to the Symphony would be or what the cost of savings might have been. We thought it was in everyone's best interest just to come up with a one-time clause for each of those concerts.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good clause. I just think that if the promoter is going to be using their equipment, that they should cover the cost.
Certainly, we'll rebuild and the, to define for that, I'm sure.
Great. Other questions? All, oh, nothing. We need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the zoning commission recommendation for refund of fees for variance lien use applications to the Redstone Pub. If you recall, this board requested, referred the request to the zoning commission. The only reason this board stated that we were doing that is because it was actually a new regulation and there may have been some confusion on the part of the business owner. It was reviewed by the zoning commission. They've recommended refund of half of the 690 zone change fee and a waiver of the new freestanding standing sign application if it, if it is filed. We did receive some correspondence, I believe the board has correspondence about, concern about setting a precedent. And I think it's clear that this board, in referring it to the zoning commission, did not intend to set a precedent, but did intend to have this reviewed because it was a new regulation. So, I just wanted to state that on the record, if that is indeed the consensus of this board. Okay. So, any questions on the recommendation? So, the motion tonight would be to accept the zoning commission's recommendation. Anyone?
Just point of clarification, we, we don't have to accept this in whole, we can accept it in part.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just, the correspondence you're referring to, I am concerned that, we obviously want to be a business-friendly community, but there are businesses out there who have paid these fees, and in paying the fee, that doesn't mean you get a yes all the time. And I think that immediate response tells us what could be looming if we did go ahead and do something.
Do you have a recommended motion?
I think maybe something that might be along the lines of a bit of a fairness move, might be to apply the fee that was paid for the first sign application to the next application, but not to grant the refund.
So what is your motion?
That we apply the fee that was paid for the application for the sign, the first application, towards the next application for the sign.
So, just for clarification, it's applying $345 to a $160 fee?
No, it's applying the $160 fee, too.
But the refund, they're suggesting is $345.
Right.
They already paid, he already paid to apply for a sign once?
Correct.
And now he's going to pay again to apply for the same sign?
That's why I think they recommend waiving it.
Correct, that's why they recommended waiving it.
That's the $160.
Correct.
All right, we're not talking about the $345.
So I don't understand the motion.
Yeah, I don't either.
Because we're not setting a precedent by carrying forward the fee that he's already paved.
But they're recommending a three, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't-
Someone here from ZOON, who might be able to explain?
Well, hold on, I understand the motion of the zoning commission, but I don't understand the motion that's before us. So, there's two parts, the refund of half of the fee, which would be a $345 refund, and then a $160 waiver, and so, that's their recommendation.
Understood.
So the motion would be what?
To apply the $160 fee, so it's not taking either of these, it would be coming up with what I think would be, again, a variation off of this, a $160 fee of their initial application for a sign be applied towards their next sign application.
I think that's the recommendation.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
So that's, if I, so you're talking just about the $160 fee for the new sign, essentially?
So you're rejecting the refund, and you're accepting the $160 fee waiver?
I would like to have it worded that the motion be a $160 fee applied towards the next application.
So applying the first fee payment to the current fee.
Correct. But in effect, it's waiving the second application.
Waiving the $160 fee for the application, not refunding anything.
I think if we're talking about trying to craft language right now that doesn't set a precedent for a future applications, that we not refund or waive, but that we apply the fee that was paid for the first time towards the next application for sign.
But it's still a waiver. I mean, in effect, you have to tell staff to waive the fee, because they don't, they have to be able to wa, the application comes in, and they're going to ask for a check for $160, and the board's going to have to say, "We waived that fee."
Because they are, the board can say, "We waived that fee because they paid it in the first one, and we're going to count that."
Right, that's right.
But that's still a waiver.
It's still a waiver, because there has to be paperwork, based on accounting and what's in finance, there has to be paperwork attached to the waiver, the fee application. So it has to say something, we can't say that it's applied, because then auditors will say, "Well, where's the, how do you apply that to that?" So I'm just asking for-
My understanding, I thought we'd done this before.
We referred it to zoning commission.
When I say waived, I didn't mean waived, the zoning commission has done a similar situation before, is that not true? Have they taken a prior fee and applied it to anyone? My understanding is that's happened.
I'm not aware of that, I'm not aware of that. There's nothing that's come before this board that has asked us to do that, and I'm not aware that that's happened. So, okay, so-
My concern is the same as yours, if we say the word waived in this, then we're setting the precedent.
I don't care what you call it, you have to wa, it's waiving, because there has to be a check accompanied the application. So if you don't want to waive it, don't make a motion. My point is, there has to be length, there has to be authorization from the Board of Selectmen that directs staff not to get a check when the new application comes in. I'm just, I'm not judging, I'm explaining that the auditors need to see an application and need to see-
I get it, we're trying to give the guy what he wants, at the same time without putting the town on the hook for future liability.
I think we can say in the minutes that this is not setting a precedence, and legislative intent can be recorded.
No, and I understand, I think there's ways to do it, I apologize for being technical, but I need the technical language to give to staff.
Just don't want 50 of these in the next meeting, because that's not what we're trying to do here.
To your point of your question, though, Sean, can we go back and see if there was, you know, this handle-
We don't have to act on this tonight, if the board wants to table it, I'd be happy to look for more information, I have no problem with that. I think we all agree, we don't want to set a precedent, I'm just not comfortable-
I understand your point.
-with a motion that doesn't, that creates auditing problems. So if folks aren't comfortable tonight, there's no problem tabled.
No, I think we're comfortable, or at least I am, I just, again.
So you want me to amend my motion, then, maybe, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just, you know, just, I'm just trying to keep the record clean. If the board's uncomfortable accepting the zoning commission's recommendation, then the board should take no action. If the board's more comfortable making a motion with whatever they're comfortable with, they should make that motion. But I, I just, the motion that was made about applying fees to one previous application to another, can't, we can't do that, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
And being in compliance with our-
And being in compliance with our policy.
Because we're sure we have not done that before.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware that that's happened.
We can look into that, though.
I can't point to an application that I remember, I just-
Would you like to table it and look into that?
Yeah, I mean, I have no, there's no rush, I have no problem tabling it if the board would like more information.
I think it's, I wish actually Hyrum was here to speak to this.
Well, this was not, I mean, if we had that question earlier, we could have done some homework and gotten you the answer, but, you know, I don't, sitting here, I don't want to give anybody the wrong information, so. I'm happy to get back to the board with that information.
Well, and I think in light of the recent correspondence that we received, I mean, I think that it points to the fact that this could be the beginning of a lot of folks coming back to us to ask.
Would it be helpful to have an opinion from council as to what sets precedence and what doesn't?
No, because, well-
Yeah, I mean, I think, at least if you want that, I mean, I think if the board's not ready to vote, then I think a motion to table would be appropriate, and then we can get back to the board with your question.
Because there may be language that the council can put in that establishes this is, I mean, sometimes in legal-
No, I know, but that's not going to solve the perception problem from the business owners, just because an attorney says something.
But it might solve the legal problem, because we may be, sometimes when you do things, you have legal obligations that you're not being, now you're being arbitrary and capricious by denying it here, I don't know what the answer is.
None of the six of us want to turn the next business owner down that comes in, and that's just, I mean, again, as we said before, our heart goes out to them, we want to help them out here, and, you know, the process was obviously frustrating, but at the same time, you know, when Antonio's comes in, and other people come in, it's just, what do we, you know, we feel for them, too.
So what do we want?
Is there a motion?
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I move that we approve the second half of the zoning recommendation, which is the waiving the $160 fee for the new sign.
But not the first?
Not the first.
We have a motion, we have a second.
And that it does not set precedent.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify, so we are, your motion is not to refund half the $690?
My motion is, very simply put, I recommend that we approve the waiver of the $160 fee for the new sign.
Motion second. I'm going to abstain, because I would like to get the answer to whether we've done this before, and I am concerned about setting a precedent, so.
I do.
I'm just sharing my thoughts. Any other questions?
I'm going to join you in abstaining on this, because I think it, I don't know what the hardship would be to wait two weeks, and we could get the information and clarity to other business owners, like, as you said, Mr. Antonio, and I don't know that there's a hardship for the $160 and waiting two weeks to have the information that this board needs to ensure that we are being fair not only to this business owner, but to future business owners and past business owners.
Yeah, I would echo that, I would like to table the issue, because I think there's clearly some outstanding questions that we haven't answered.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion fails, do we have another motion?
I would like to make the motion to table this for our next Board of Select meeting.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, I would also like to make the motion.
Well, just like to see, what's the vote, I'm sorry. To table?
To table?
I think we all voted to table.
Yes?
Yes.
Any other discussions?
Just a request, that we get the information requested from Hyrum as to whether this has been done in the past.
Absolutely.
Recommendations.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Two questions I have is whether there are any other, whether the process to do this, because I think that the concern about setting a precedent was explained to the zoning commission, and they did issue a recommendation nonetheless. And number two, if there's any clarification from council as to how we would proceed. And I think that should give additional information for the board to be able to make a comfortable decision.
And it's in no way impacting the substance of the decision we'll make in two weeks, it's just getting more information.
Correct, yeah, I don't think there's any rush, as I said, I appreciate that. I think the board should feel comfortable making whatever decision they want to make, and certainly more information is always better.
And I'm sorry, did that also include finding out if we had done any applica-
Yes, I said that.
Please, for, okay.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you. Next item is to accept the resignation of James Oliver as an alternate member of the historic district commission, can I have a motion to accept?
Will we accept, thanks?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, next is the regular meeting minutes for October 16th.
Will we approve?
Second. Any questions, corrections, changes?
I just have two minor, sorry, they're very minor.
I'd be disappointed if-
I know, but they're very minor. On the second page, second paragraph, we just need a period in the, and then, I think the last sense of that into is one word.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those changes, thank you.
Did you get the second one?
Tom did not get it.
Into. Into.
Where was that?
The same paragraph at the very end.
Liaison reports personnel, you have a report?
Yes. We had two items on our agenda, the first was action on proposals submitted in response to a request for proposal, which was the analysis of the impact of potential delegation of the first selectmen's personnel function. We were given the different RFPs to review prior to the meeting, and there are some excellent proposals, but Moira made the, I think, excellent point, that whatever group we pick will be working with the personnel board probably over the next year, or certainly six months, and she made the point that maybe it would be best to let the new personnel board after the election, since she will not be on the board anymore with progress. And she thought that that would be more appropriate for the new personnel board to pick, since they'll be the one who will be dealing with the consultant going forward, and so we made a motion to table that, and it would pass unanimously, so we do not have a recommendation to you tonight on that. The second one, yeah.
Can I just add one?
Yeah.
My comment about that followed on the heels of whether or not we would take the recommendation from the Director of Administrative Services, or bring the firms in to interview them, and there was a consensus that they wanted to interview them, and my concern was that that's going to carry us into-
Good point.
-a new board.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, I was prepared to.
Thank you. You just didn't want to, you want to get out of work.
But I would thank Tom for putting this together for us, and the proposals are all excellent, so we enjoyed reading them.
Yes.
The second action we had was for revisions to the reference library and impartine circulation assistant job descriptions, these were being recommended by the Director of the library, basically to update them, I think that she said they were from 1997, and to accommodate the new world of technology, and also customer service needs. It just changes, really, the descriptions to what they're actually doing, it just upstates them, it's not an addition of money for our reorganization.
Would you like a motion tonight to do that?
I would like a motion to accept these, they come to you unanimously recommended by the Personnel Committee.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any questions? Just thanks to our library director, who's hit the ground running, and she has a lot of great ideas, and is really implementing some great new procedures, so we really look forward to her service, and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Any other reports?
Just a quick one, the first report is that we did have the senior citizen sports night on October 24th, which was the first one of the year, it was the senior citizen volleyball night, and it was very exciting, it was the first time many people had seen a volleyball game, and it's a little different than what you might have imagined when, 50 years ago, yeah.
Not 50 years ago.
But there's a lot of diving and sliding, so I think the seniors really enjoyed it, we had a great turnout, and I want to thank Dane Street, and the coach of the volleyball team, Neil Sullivan, for hosting that, it's, we had a great turnout, and of course Cathy Marshall and all the parent and student volunteers, we had about 20 students who came to help out. Mary, I wanted to thank you and Tom and Sean for doing the Veterans Open House, we attended that, and it's a great process to let our veterans know that we're here to help them, assist them in any way, and then, I'm trying to think what else happened. And we were at the Terrafill Parade the other day with SpongeBob, so thank you, Terrafill, for doing that and not having rain and snow.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other reports?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
For one second.
Oh, can we have a motion to amend the agenda, and I'm going to ask Mary and Moira probably to back out, we do have an update on Aquarian that I would like to present.
So why don't we first take that motion to amend the agenda, take up Aquarian, and there'll be no further business before the board, so we'll adjourn after that report.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to do that?
Can you make that?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and for the record, we're going home.
Lisa, we will not be here that long, seriously, right? Lisa, you can take the chair.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Thank you. I just wanted to update the Board of Selectmen analysis for the public. In September, late September, PIRA rendered its decision on the Aquarian water rate request ruling that, according to their press release, regulators rejected Aquarian's three-year rate proposal, instead approving an 8.6 overall increase, which included a 2% infrastructure surcharge previously approved as add-on to customer bills. The approved rate design moves Aquarian's water company-wide rates closer to statewide equalization. We, having dealt with Aquarian in the past, had Mr. Cook write a letter to Aquarian to get clarification on what that meant to the town of Sinsbury, because often what is reported in the paper turns out to be very different from the town of Sinsbury.
And it has.
And we received a, so on September 30th, Mr. Cook did write that letter, and you had copies of that letter at our last meeting, and we had a response on October 17th in a letter to Mr. Cook from Charles Forlot, President and CEO of Aquarian, advising the town that the increase for resident, for the residential class of customer in the company's northern division, which is ours, is 17.2%, reflective of the PIRA decision that permits metered revenue in the northern and western divisions should each be increased two times the overall increase. This is different than what was reported in the PIRA press release. We view this as an outrageous outcome for our residents, and we are once again disappointed that we had to dig so deeply to discover the truth, and the intent, it goes back to a lack of transparency and adequate communication that we have experienced throughout. Without our letter asking for clarification, this would not have been evident. It certainly wasn't mentioned in PIRA's press release, and we received no notification from Aquarian until we specifically requested it. I have spoken with Commissioner Art House and Vice Commissioner Jack Bekowski of PIRA, Mr. Bekowski requested a copy of the Aquarian letter we received, and indicated he would review the letter and respond to me tomorrow. I wanted to get a recommendation from this board tonight as to whether this board would like to have council review our options. If the board is interested in pursuing this, we will have Tom speak with Attorney Bob DiCresenzo to evaluate and report back to the board, possibly at a special meeting at the end of this week or early next week, because there may be different, either administrative or appellate, options open to us.
Would it be within the timeline from Mr. Bekowski that we might hear back from him with his response back to the letter we received, in order to be able to-
Yes.
Sounds like that timeline is consistent.
Okay.
Yes, we will, and then we'll have Mr. Cook and Mr. DiCresenzo speaking to the Attorney General and Department of Consumer. Attorney General and Department of Consumer...
The idea is, at first, we want to thank Lisa, who encouraged the letter to Aquarian in the first place. It was something of a surprise to see that 17.2%. And we're now trying to ascertain whether or not the Attorney General and the consumer folks are applying to appeal the decision. We want to see what, we're at the thought to see what some of our options might be with respect to this, so we try to do the cost-benefit analysis, in fact, yeah, exactly.
And if there isn't a feel whether we join us, then...
Amicus brief, or...
Correct. It's not, you know, we, there are a lot of issues out there that have to be sorted out in terms of what our legal standing is and the situation, and how best to approach this, so...
Other, I'm sorry, other communities, I know we took the initiative to ask for this, but have others done the same, and do we have an indication of...
We do not.
What, I don't know. Okay, I mean, that would be...
You know, and I think, the issue is that for any single town to be involved in this is cost prohibitive in a lot of ways, and you have to become experts in a wonderful world of utility regulation and vote resources for something that's already being litigated by the Attorney General and the consumer protection folks. So I think that explains the absence of those folks there, but it's, you know, it's not impossible, but we want to be, one of the options here is to involve other channels.
Absolutely, certainly, it's better writing and...
Right, because I mean, the reality is, we are a single rate payer, as far as...
But it's for the northern and western divisions, so there are other towns, and we can get an evaluation of what those towns are and...
Just so folks are clear, we're only as powerful as an individual rate payer is, which is what we all are individually, and we walk out of this room, we're not treated any differently, because we're a municipality here, so, which is unfortunate, but there's only so much we can do. But, okay, so we'll see what our options are and then get back together.
Is it the consensus of this group that we would like the attorney to give us recommendations and...
I can just release here, yeah. And do we also know, just as we're so close, seems like always so close to the next budget cycle, what is the impact of 17.2% across the board between...
We did have that number.
I have that number somewhere. I have to pull it off the top of my head, and I get it wrong, but I guess...
And obviously, the difference between what we paid last year to what we would pay this year with that, so we'd know what the...
And it impacts the board of ed, we have the number for the town on the board of ed, and we can look that up again.
Yep.
Oh, actually...
Thank you. Will we adjourn?
Do I need, do we need a motion to ask council to do that, or reconsider?
I can proceed, a staff initiative to do that, and we would vote on whatever gets returned, correct.
So yes, now make a motion.
With that, I move we adjourn.
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.
Go Sox.